This conference will now be recorded.
It is six o'clock, Wednesday, May fifteenth. Regular session of the Rome City Council will come to order. We have a quorum. The outgoing mayor is not present. Mayor Mitchell. Do we have somebody for invocation? Do we want, anyone want to do this? Oh. So we'll have invocation and pledge allegiance. Next is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. We'll go on to announcements. May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, city council orientation is at nine AM. That's Friday. May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, city offices closed to observe Memorial Day. June third, twenty twenty-four, planning and zoning meeting. June fourth, twenty twenty-four, bulk trash pickup. June fifth, monthly outdoor warning siren test, weather permitting. June eighth, annual splash days with the fire department. June thirteenth, city council meeting at six PM. June fifteenth, annual splash days, implement weather date. It's that's a makeup day if there's implemented weather. June nineteenth, city offices closed for June team. June twenty-seventh, city council meeting at six PM. It's a lot of announcements. Anybody else have any more announcements? We'll go on to the consent agenda. Approval for the council minutes from March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Make a motion.
I'm sorry, if you'll recall, at the last meeting, I didn't have these in the packet. So we do have them for your decision.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Regular agenda, we have canvassing and swearing in. Canvassing the election results from May fourth, general election, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. We do have two returning council members to swear in this evening, and we have a new mayor to swear in as well as canvass the election results from the May fourth general election. We also have selection of a mayor pro temp for one year and updating authorized signatures for bank accounts. So I'm going to turn this over to Shayna as she has the information on the canvassing the election results and then the oath of office.
Okay. For place number four, Shirley Mize received a total of one hundred and eleven votes. Krista King received one hundred and six votes. For place five, Deborah Becraft received one hundred and nine votes. And Casey Schumake received one hundred and sixty-three. And for mayor, Patricia Mitchell received one hundred and ten votes. And Kenneth Crenshaw received one hundred and sixty-six votes.
So.
Okay, we need a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the second one's certificates of election, statements of office and oath of office for elected council members, city secretary.
Okay, up first, we have Kenneth Crenshaw.
Aye, Kenneth Crenshaw. He's all in his word. And I will faithfully execute. The office of Rome City Council Mayor. State of Texas. To the best of my ability. To serve protecting the fin. The Constitution. And the laws of the United States. And the state. So here we got. Aye, Kenneth Crenshaw. He's all in his word. And I have not directly or indirectly. Paid, altered, or promised. Contributed or promised to. Any money. Or any debt. Promised any public officer or company. For the evening or with whom. Of a vote at the election. At which I was elected. For a reward. In a clear manner. A compensation. Whichever the case may be.
Next, we have Krista King.
So now Mayor Crenshaw gets to do the rest of this? So now you get to take over. Yay.
This time, I would like to announce a five-minute pause.
And in light of that, you all just take a five-minute hiatus. We're waiting for Mr. Schumake's family to come so they can be a part of his swearing in as well.
This conference will now be recorded.
It is now six fifteen. We're going to call it, feeding back to order.
And now we're going to swear in Casey Schumake.
We also have the results from the bond election that we need to canvass. We can do either one. We can move to eight and finish this out since it's all part of canvassing and then move to the mayor pro temp. It's whatever the mayor would prefer. Yes. As part of our general election on May the fourth, we had three propositions on the ballot, Proposition A, B, and C, for bond elections. The results for Proposition A, there were one hundred and sixty-three for the proposition, one hundred and sixteen against. For Proposition B, which is the issuance of the eleven million dollar general obligation bond for the wastewater treatment plant, there were one hundred and sixty-three in favor and one hundred and sixteen against. So the exact results for Proposition A and B. Proposition C, the issuance of three point five million to improve the sanitary sewer lines, one hundred and sixty-eight for and one hundred and thirteen against. All three propositions carried. We also had the rollback election. As you all will recall, that was not approved by the voters. So we will be working with the county to handle what we need to behind the scenes on that issue.
I make a motion to accept the canvassing results for the bonds, A, B, and C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, ladies. At this time, I would like the council to indulge me with a little procedural change and something for the gallery. During the proceedings, please turn off your cell phones, silence them. And for the council, I would like to please hold all motions and seconds until I call for them. And we'll vote and place orders that hopefully keep track of what everybody's saying. We can keep the record straight. So if that's okay, thank you. I just already skipped number one.
Mayor, if we could go back to number three, we could finish out the selection of the mayor pro temp.
Yes, we may. Do I have any nominations for mayor pro temp for the one-year term?
I love Dave. Michelle Ty, mayor pro temp. Second.
Discussion.
It'll be much easier now.
Let's have a vote. Place one.
Yes.
Place three.
Aye.
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 I elected the mayor pro temp for the next year. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Michelle, you've done a really great job and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Now we have to do the National Police Week proclamation.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we had a two-part question there on the authorized signatures for the bank accounts. We need to update that with Michelle Ty's already on there, but we need to have a motion to update so that you are on that as well as the signature.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move that we update the authorized signatures for the city bank accounts.
Have a second.
Thank you.
All in favor, place one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Thank you, sir.
Item number two, the regular agenda is the National Police Week proclamation.
Well, we would like to call Chief D up to the podium. And if you'd like to go and read the proclamation to him, that would be wonderful.
Proclamation, recognition for the city of Rome, National Police Week, May twelfth, eighteen twenty-four. Recognize National Police Week, twenty twenty-four, on the streets of Rome. Those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty after the election. The state hasn't heard the march. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving the community throughout the United States, including the dedicated members of the open city zone. And since the first of four deaths in seventeen eighty-six, there are currently twenty-four thousand and sixty-seven law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the open streets of the city and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the national office in Monroe, Washington, DC. And whereas Texas has lost more officers in the line of duty than the other states in two thousand thirty-one lines of law. And whereas, May fifteenth is the end of peace officer in Monroe Bay in honor of all fighting officers in the community. The US Bank should be done to have that. And therefore, with the law, the city zone, the service, nature of the eighteen, the eighteen, the National Police Week in Rome, Texas, and public services service of law enforcement across the nation. I appreciate you. Sign that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the sentiments that you just extended to not only myself, but the entire Rome Police Department as a whole. It's been my unfortunate experience to have actually buried a training officer who was killed in the line of duty when I was much younger in my career. And we almost went through that here. You guys might remember that Sergeant Ritchie was shot actually my first week. So we almost went through that tragedy again. So it ploys the staff to know that you guys appreciate us and it is absolutely our honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Rome. And we appreciate all the support that you guys give us.
Thank y'all.
Item number three, National Public Works Week proclamation. Proclamation, recognition, the city of Rome, National Public Works Week, May nineteenth. Whereas public works services provided in our community are instrumental in our service of the world. And whereas efficient operations of public work services include doors to the street, public buildings, waste garbage, tolls, and engineers providing essential services for our citizens. And whereas to help safety and comfort for the Roman community directly in the sewer system. And whereas quality and technical efficiency and level of planning, design, construction, body dependence on methods and skills of public work and vision. And whereas the efficiency of qualified, dedicated personnel that work with us. Two of the employees are likely to be damaged and understanding of the purpose of their work. Now therefore, I can, Mayor, see, do your best to make it right. May nineteenth, Public Works Week, bench squad in the back of the road.
I want to thank you, Mayor. And of course, we appreciate y'all and we love serving y'all. Our public work guys, they love to hear that you have some support and we're always here. Thank y'all.
You earned it, man. Item number four, vacant city-owned property. I believe this is Captain Lindner's largest agenda item. I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I requested these so that we could examine vacant properties that are underperforming for the city. So I'd like to first start and ask some questions about the list of properties that's.
I will do my best. I may have to do some research, but yes, I'm happy to start that conversation.
First one, four hundred BC Rome description is the police department. I'm assuming that's a quarter acre that's adjacent to the police department? That is actually the police department.
I'm pretty sure that's the quarter acre that it sits on, yeah.
So I wouldn't consider that vacant.
No, it's not necessarily vacant, but this is a list that I found that the previous city administrator had put together of all properties of the city. And I do think that as we continue to evaluate our options as it relates to said facilities, there are some that are currently occupied, such as the police department, that would be better served in a commercial manner if we were to sell that at some point in time and maybe conjoin it with a property that's next to it that owner might be interested to sell a half acre versus a quarter of an acre. And if you had a commercial property there, that would generate higher ad valorem rate and it would potentially generate sales in use. So that's something that council will want to think about as we look forward, not necessarily today, but in years to come, what we're going to do to consolidate facilities and to leave those properties that are in our major pathways to their best and highest use, which may not be the police department. So it's listed here.
Yes, and that's my intention is to draw attention to it tonight so that we can consider it for. So phase three, Biwell, I'm assuming this is a plot thing.
My understanding, this is approximately thirty-nine point two acres that has been deeded to the city for a future public park. I think most of this is in the flood plain. So I don't know that it would be unless we filed a loaner and reclaimed the property. Would not necessarily be good for commercial use or any other development. But that's kind of how staff has described that property to me. Mr. Dominguez and I have gone and looked at this property. We will need to do something at some point in time because currently people have used it to dump some trash. And so we need to make sure that we keep it clean for the community as well as potentially don't have misuse of it as we go along.
West Side wastewater treatment plant, I'm assuming that is occupied.
Yes, sir, that is our current west plant that was just part of Proposition B.
Water tower.
So that would be your elevated tank that we have right here on the highway.
Rhodes Ellis Homestead, ten acres.
I think just given the surface area of the roads is approximately ten acres, but those were deeded to the city, so they're considered quote unquote property.
Veterans Park is occupied. Family Park Pavilion and Family Park are.
Yes.
Two oh one School Road, I'm assuming that's the property we're on right now?
It is, yes, the old school, the fire department, the public works building, and then the community center and this senior community center with the kitchen that's out front.
Okay, north corner of Morris, the old, no, I believe that sits vacant. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is correct. Mr. Dominguez says yes, that is vacant.
Old City Hall, twenty west first, that is our old city hall?
Yes.
And it is vacant?
It is. We have had several people reach out and inquired as to what the city intends to do with that property. I've heard everything from potentially salons to restaurants to any other type of entertainment place where folks could come in and be a part of the community. I understand that that facility still has the old vault in it and it has a lot of historical significance for the city. So we'd want to be mindful of how that's used. There have been a couple of developers or entrepreneurs who have approached and wanted to know if the city would be interested in a longer-term lease, where they leased the facility from the city. But again, we need to get some direction from Carbon so that we know what we can and can't do with that. But it's currently just sitting empty.
Land Private Road, forty-nine oh six.
So Sunshine Meadows? It's an old well lot, Mr. Dominguez says.
So it is vacant?
There's an existing well right there. I'd be lying to you if I told you who it is, but it's something Barnett LLC or something, similar to that company. It's a, yeah, yes.
Themwell Five is in use. Rhodes Chisholm, so those are the roads in Chisholm, right?
Yes.
Bubba Crossing, that's where our pump exists. So that's in use also.
Yes, that's our booster station there. Yes, that's our booster station there at Bobo.
Corner of Freedom Parkway.
Freedom Parkway is there by Love's. I'm not certain what property this is. Is that point zero four? We'd have to check on this one because it may be mislabeled here on this form. We do have a lift station there, a very small footprint.
Prairie Point Park, which is ten acres intended for a, and I believe that that is being considered for use.
It is. Depending upon the developer and whether the city and the developer are able to come to an agreement on economic development agreements and planned districts, then that would be used as a park at that point.
So I guess I want to clarify here what I consider underperforming or non-performing property. One that's owned by the city, provides no revenue, and provides no benefit to the community. A lot of these do provide benefit to the community, so they don't fall into. Each of these has a responsibility for the city to maintain. So obviously, if we can do something with the ones that are vacant, we can void that responsibility. And sometimes depending on property, a non-performing property can have the potential to be liable to the city. In contrast, performing property will provide tax revenue and some property in sales potentially. It can provide a community benefit, goods and services possibly. It would be maintained by a private entity instead of the city. And it has the potential to add to the local economy by creating business opportunities. So I wanted to just break my thoughts on that. That's really all I had tonight. I'm probably going to take this away, take a closer look at this. Just do some thought about what can be done with these properties. I encourage everyone else to certainly do the same thing in the public. That's all I have tonight. How does Jerry Jones get Arlington to put up a billion dollars? On carpet?
That's beyond my purview.
Yeah, we'd need a different attorney perhaps.
Much like a Northeast Mall when that happened at first.
That be referred to as bliding an area? Is that correct?
Item number five is irrigation water meters.
I was told about the possibility of people getting a second water meter just for irrigation, and it wouldn't go into the city sewer, so they're not being charged that, right? But I wanted to find out what all that entailed, and how much that costs, and what that costs to the city and the Public Works and all that other stuff.
Okay, so we'll start at the, I guess at the basis of getting the water meter. So the cost of a water meter today is roughly, for the water line and the parts to the property line, is roughly a little over seven hundred dollars, depends on the market, that's all brass pieces, poly, etc., all the parts. Labor-wise, four hours usually does it, but there's always what-ifs. What if we hit a water line, the water line's deeper than we're thinking, maybe there's a rock shelf and we can't get around it, and we have to move around. So that does add up the cost. There's no definite just four hours, but that's a good estimate. And the impact of adding another one. So that's the biggest thing of impact. Your system, every time you add a water line, or any time you add even sewer, every time you add something to the system, that is more, I don't know how, impact on your system. It's more chlorine, more, you gotta have more usage for your wells, except for storage, and then overall maintenance just kind of combines all in one. So that is the basic layout of how to get the meter to another customer. Now, the part where I guess I'm going to struggle with is.
So on impact fees, one of the things that is difficult to understand is Rome has an impact fee for water of. It's about thirty-one hundred dollars for each connection. Then we have a sewer tech fee or sewer impact fee, which is about nine thousand. So whenever we add something to the system, cities typically charge that impact fee to diffuse the costs across the entirety of the system. It's not only the daily operations and maintenance, it's the cost of the meters, it's the cost of staff going out and doing those things, it's the cost of servicing the bonds, it's the cost of all the reporting that comes along with however many connections you have. And so that is meant to spread out the impact across the entirety of your water and water sewer system. It is completely customary for cities to charge both water and sewer impact fees in order to raise revenue, because within your utility fund, there's only three ways that you can pretty much raise revenues to pay for those services. It's either through the rates, it's through the issuance of bonds, which have their own costs and interest associated with them, and it's through development and/or impact fees that go along with that. So it's customary for other cities to do this. We've had some questions from developers in the past. If the developer, for instance, in Prairie Point comes forward, they would be doing all of the install of the water lines in that development in and of itself, so we're not required to extend staff time or be a part of that. They handle it, they install it, they contract, they engineer, they do all of those, so they get a credit on those impact fees up into the amount that they actually end up expending. So if your impact fees are, impact fees are a million dollars, and they spend right at a million dollars, you're washing it out. If they go a million five, I have to check with Carvin, because I think that's a little bit of an imbalance at that point. Yeah, so if it costs more than that, we don't reimburse them per se, but they will try and seek a credit in some form or fashion up to the amount that they spend. So I know I've already talked to this with the developers from Prairie Point, and considering the fact that, at least in the current arrangement, we would not do anything with water and sewer, they would handle all of that, including if they have to drill a well on that property to help supplement the need. And so they would receive that credit of those fees. Eventually, they would deed all of that infrastructure to the city, and at that point, you recoup some of your costs through the rates that you would charge those folks, being new customers, onto the water system itself. So we have another development that is making its way through the process of about fifty homes on Hickory on a ten-acre plot, I believe. It's right at fifty-four. They had thought they would acquire another ten acres next to it for a total of twenty, and then it would have been a hundred homes, but they've not managed to close that deal yet. So they would be required to pay those impact fees, which is about twelve thousand dollars. They are going to tie into our system, they're going to impact our capacity, they're going to generate additional work for the staff, they will probably have a lift station over in that area, and so those fees help to offset those costs.
So I understand the new development needing, needs those impact fees. What I'm looking at are people that actually are already part of the system, and would they save money by putting in a second water meter to, just for irrigation, for a pool, whatever? But those impact fees are what I'm wondering about.
So is the intention of these residents that may be inquiring that they could reduce their sewer fees because they're not having the water go through the sewer system?
Correct. It's just for irrigation.
I'd just like to point out something, not that I'm advocating it, but the state of Texas allows municipal water systems to apply runoff, stormwater runoff things to residents. Rome currently does not do that. But it would seem like if we were put in that situation, I'd have to just bring it up, that fortunately, we don't do that now. It's kind of, I mean, rain falls on your property, it runs off, you get taxed on it, you know, basically. So just bringing that.
Think about a neighborhood with curb and gutter, and when the rain falls on said property and it rolls off into the street, it's going into your sewer system in some form or fashion. So cities justify those conversations because you are impacting the entirety of the system. If you think about what we've talked to you all recently about that west plant, the I and I issues and the runoff definitely impact that system, and they have cost us several thousands of dollars just this spring alone to abate the issues that are there with it. And I understand what you're saying, on new construction, it is easy to understand, but whenever you set a meter, or whenever you open another tap, it impacts the system regardless, which is why the cities charge the fees. We do have a cap on sewer currently.
Residential.
One hundred and thirty dollars a month. So I understand the argument, but there is a cap that doesn't continue to rack up where you're at two or three hundred dollars on sewer in that regard. We are a small city, we are a small system, and so looking at different charges is the only way we have to fund the needs of the community. And we have done a very good job of keeping the rates low for many years, but it has taken a toll on the utility fund, as we've discussed in this setting.
Yes, I wanted, I just wanted to have this discussion to see if that's something that they would save money with, or if that's even feasible. I have no idea, but explaining the impact fees is something that I needed to know too.
I'm curious if some of the concern falls for, I think some of our residents receive water from us and then sewer from a neighboring municipality, so I'm wondering if that's part of the issue. I know we have a cap. I'm wondering if the neighboring municipality.
I can't speak for Newark. I don't know what their fees are, but that's not unusual either for cities to have a cap. Some cities will also do winter quarter averaging, where they base the sewer rates and the cap on December, January, February, when you're not watering. It just depends on how you structure your rates, and there are a variety of different levers that you can pull to fund the needs of your utility system. It's just, we have not explored that well in the past, and we have not kept up with the prevailing costs for our utility fund in the past.
The fact that the utility fund is so below what it should be, I mean, I completely understand. That's all I had.
Any other questions?
Go for the discussion. Item number six, speed study for Old Town, Councilmember King, would you have this?
Yes, a couple of weeks ago, I had asked, we had heard from some citizens with the traffic congestion coming through town since the bridge has been deconstructed. We ask you to take a look at the traffic in Old Town, so Chief.
Thank you, Councilmember King. Yes, we did do a four-day traffic survey just recently on Morris. And what we determined, that there's a, I hope y'all can hear me okay at home, there's a couple different things we look at with this. We surveyed the number of vehicles that travel through that area and the speed at which they're traveling as they pass through. The survey showed over the course of four full days, a total of three hundred and twenty-two cars traveled both east and west through there. That's eighty-one cars a day. So yes, there is traffic that's going through there that obviously doesn't live in that neighborhood. The good news is, the speed limit is twenty-five, and the average speed was twenty-one. So that's a positive thing. And over the course of four days, we would start issuing citations or at least making traffic stops at eleven miles an hour over the speed limit. So at thirty-six, we would start stopping the vehicles, and out of three hundred and twenty-two cars, only seventeen were going thirty-six or faster. And most of those were right, not between thirty-six and forty, the fastest were. So I do understand how the neighbors might feel, that Mr. Loftus has spoken to this from personal experience, that it does seem like there's a lot of cars speeding through there, but our survey doesn't prove that out. I can set that up. We did it on Morris, assuming, projecting that that's where they're going to come from, because that's the first turn from Main Street to get to the School Road, to bypass the traffic going down B.C. Rome. If you'd like, we could set another one up on First Street and possibly Second Street, if that's something you'd get.
What about School Road?
We've done one there. I can give you the results of that. I'm sure it's changed a little bit since this construction's come through. And if you'd like one there, we could do one there as well.
Seems they go pretty fast on that road, especially with the speed pumps gone. But they did go pretty fast with the speed pumps there, whatever they were.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do know that it was not going out, that there was a speeding problem on School Road prior to the construction. I can't speak to it now. Certainly, a survey would tell us that. But contrary to the impression by standing out there, it's not what we're thinking. It's not the problem that we expect.
I would like you to continue to gather some more data. So School Road, First Street, what was the other one? Second Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll get those for you, and I'll bring them back to the next councilman.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else? Mr. Loftus?
I do have a curiosity. Being a regular pedestrian in Old Town, I do have some concern about Business 287. I realize we have little control over that. However, it seems like when I have been on 287 and other communities in Texas, it's a long highway, they seem to have much lower speed limits through their towns than we do.
So that's a text dot controlled road? We can ask them to do a speed survey like we did on thirty-four thirty-three, and it changed it, I believe, from sixty to fifty-five in front of the schools. I don't know the process. I'm currently, I have sent several emails and made several phone calls since this construction started on the bridge because of the concerns with the crashes that are on B.C. Rome slash one fourteen at the southbound service road of 287. I have gotten very little response. For the record, we have worked, if memory serves, nine crashes there in that intersection since construction began. And I have told them, text dot that, and recommended they put in a stop sign, either temporary or permanent, to make it match the northbound service road, and as of yet, they have not gotten back.
We appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If there are any further discussions.
All right, next. Number seven, ordinance establishing capital threshold by. Number seven, ordinance establishing capital threshold of $5,000.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the items that you do have on your agenda is in our recent audits and in talking with our audit team, Mr. Spoor, who handled our audits for many years, capitalized everything at $1,000. That worked well when it was 10, 15, 20 years ago, but now when a water heater costs $1,000, I did research, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommended threshold, and it is now at $5,000. By keeping it at 1,000, it requires those consultants to go back and do an in-depth review of every item that cost more than that to capitalize it in the audit. And that is really not a necessity at this point in time. So you do have some policy language in front of you in talking with Carvin. He suggested that we simply amend the current financial policies through a change in the policy document itself versus an ordinance. And so this is the language that we have, he found for us and has suggested that council consider if we want to make this change to our current business practices.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion? Your second?
Second.
Call for a vote, place one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Thank you, sir. If we could revisit eight, I do have a very quick update for you all.
Number eight, update on the bond package issuance and jet project.
So this was something that was brought forward at our last meeting as a potential discussion point. We have been in contact with our financial advisor and our bond attorney about the issuance therein of these packages and how we stagger these so that our Public Works teams can oversee since these are all directed towards Public Works. So we are looking to prioritize the work with up eternity groundwater conservation district determining the best location for the water wells. So we will start that process, but I don't have a timeline for when it will actually begin. We won't sell bonds for a couple of months from now and we may stagger those sales depending upon the need so that we're not paying interest or having them come due sooner than they need to be. So we're thinking to work the water wells and the West Plant semi simultaneously and then start the INI shortly thereafter. So I'll continue to work with those financial advisors and that team of folks to determine what's best on behalf of Rome and I will bring you updates as we go along in this process.
Constituents, I'll be asking, you know, I think there's unrealistic expectations out there that this stuff's going to start happening overnight and it's not. So we got to manage expectations on this deal.
Number nine, consider or act?
City of Rome received three bids for the construction of Texas CBVG well improvement project, CBV 21-0018. Council would consider awarding the lowest bidder, A and leadership group, DDA, Business AS, A and B Water, for $298,900 for the base bid. This was for the well over in downtown by the old water well or the old water tower.
Yes, sir.
And there were three bids on that. As you'll see, you see such a disparity in the bids. I'm sure everybody knows that a lot of times people throw bids out there just to see if they get it because they really don't want it. If they get it, it's worth their time. So that's probably why there's such a disparity in the amounts.
Yes, I saw site improvements. What's the huge disparity?
So our engineering firm has reached out to A and B Water and had conversations with them to ensure that they understood the scope of the bid and they have worked with many smaller cities and smaller CBVG grants. I do think that Raymar and InControl probably work with some larger projects, at least according to what our feedback was from Mr. Weldon. And he feels comfortable awarding the bid or council making that recommendation to award the bid to A and B Water so that we can get this process moving.
Just got a question to clarify on well number six. Is this the well, this is the well that has the radon issue?
Yes, sir.
And has the radon remediation already been completed or is that...
It's offline, but that will be part of this work that they will do.
I just have a little bit of concern, you know, in the vein of you get what you pay for, I just want to be sure with this big disparity that we're going to get a quality product.
He feels pretty confident, having spent time talking with them about the process and the expectations and how they went about formulating their bid package. And he is, Mr. Weldon is our city engineer.
I'm noticing under instrumentation and integration, I'm assuming this typically be SCADA systems?
I'm sorry?
I'm assuming that instrumentation and integration would be SCADA systems. I just want to make sure we're not getting any 90's technology or something like that.
The SCADA upgrades on that new tank, it's just going to be floats and everything else is already existing. So it's going to be minor, more or less just plug and play with what's there.
You'll also see there's some discrepancy in the 40,000 gallon bolted galvanite steel ground storage tank. Those can get very pricey very quickly. So you can see that bidder number three bid that at $255,000. That is certainly something that would have impacted the bid in and of itself as well as there are electricals at 40,000 where A and B was at 22,000.
Do we have any performance expectations that can be measured?
So Grant Works takes care of that for us as our granting agency. So they're overseeing that and working with Mr. Weldon as it relates to the actual implementation of the project.
Do we have any further discussion?
Do we have a motion to accept, to accept issue of award the bid to A and B Water?
I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to A and B Water, bidder one.
Second?
Second.
Revote, one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
We do have one under the city secretary category. It won't take very long.
All right. Section 55.551.074 personnel discuss appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee or hear complaint or charge against officer or employee in executive session unless officer or employee request a public hearing subject to city secretary. Time now is 7:01 PM. We'll move to executive session.
This conference will now be recorded.
Right, it is 7:17. We call this meeting back to order. There's no action as a result of the executive session. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Don't we need future agenda items?
I'm sorry? Yes, we do. Are there any future agenda items the council would like to add?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to pursue researching what it takes to get the half cent sales tax currently collected by county back to the city of Rome. That's one. The second one is that since we now have the framework for a bond committee, that each member needs to bring forth the nomination for a member for that covenant. So two items.
I would like to thank Shayna for everything she's done. This is going to be her last council meeting, so thank you Shayna.
If you could indulge me for just a moment, I will tell you that when I started here in Rome, our records were in the building but not properly organized and I would not have made it through this far if it had not been for Shayna's help, for her direction, for her advice, for her everything. So I cannot tell you how invaluable she has been to me through this entire process of getting settled into a new city, coming from one where I knew the history because I grew the city from the ground up. And I feel like we're doing that again here to a certain extent in Rome. We've got a great foundation from which we're starting and we are going to grow exponentially over the next several years. And she has just done a tremendous job getting that office organized, getting things scanned in and completely helping Eric and I as he was in from and as I transitioned in as the new city administrator. So my hat is off to you, dear, and you will dearly be missed.
I will also jump in on that. I see you as, you know, the duck that underneath the water and you're paddling maybe, but on the top, you are a pure grace and you have been very professional throughout a lot of situations, circumstances that a lot of people wouldn't have been able to handle. And it speaks to your grit and your perseverance. So we're just really proud of you. We're proud of the time that we've had you here and we hope that you learned something along the way that you can take with you to your next journey.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? To adjourn? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.